It cuts pretty close here.
Okay, everyone, we are now live. Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will call a meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Approve our agenda. Do we have any to add to our agenda here tonight? Madam Inter C E O.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under unfinished business, I would like to add an update on the 2021 budget survey, please.
Thank you. Is there any other items to be added to our agenda? See, now I have a recommendation then that the agenda be approved as presented. We were summoned to move the motion, please. Moved by Council of Pecos, signed by Deputy Mayor Carleton. Is there no discussion? All in favor of the motion? It's carried. Moving on for agenda, decorate some patches. You can clear it anytime you see fit during the meeting. Public here. We have a public meeting. Consider renaming of Highway 6, Tanburgh Street. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a person.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we did circulate notice of this public meeting to all affected residents. We did have one registrant to participate in this meeting. However, they were unable to attend. So at this time, we do not have any registrants to speak to this. I will say that, you know, we are required to have a public meeting when considering changing of roadway names. So we are simply fulfilling our requirement to do so. That doesn't mean there's any decisions being made here tonight. There is still discussions to be had with staff, the MTO, as well as Gray County prior to moving forward with this renaming. So there will be a subsequent staff report to follow up to this public meeting to determine next steps.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we've met our requirement of a public meeting. Okay. So I'll move on to the agenda then. We're down to our presentations. We have a presentation from Sarah Crowley and our committee on community safety and wellbeing. And I'll turn the floor over to either Sarah or Barb.
Thank you so much. This is Sarah. I'll be doing the majority of the presentation and then Barb is joining as well for questions afterwards.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I'm going to share my screen so you can see the presentation. Please let me know if you can see that.
Sarah, you can hear us speaking?
You can now. Perfect. Thank you so much. All right. So as mentioned and as outlined in the agenda, we are here to speak to you with regards to the community safety and wellbeing planning process for the municipalities of Bruce and Gray. We have completed Phase One of our project and we are doing a virtual roadshow right now to councils and police service boards in order to share this information. So community safety and wellbeing planning, as I'm sure you've heard over the last 12 to 14 months, has really been presented to municipalities under the Police Services Act. It's a legislative piece of work. But the goal is ultimately to look at how to reduce crime across our region in order, by focusing on the social determinants of health, looking at upstream interventions, where we're focusing on housing, healthcare, food, income, and social and cultural expression. So did want to highlight for everybody that at this point in time, we believe this is the largest and most unique collaboration in Ontario. So the Ontario framework, as I'm sure you've seen, but just to highlight again, the framework really focuses on four areas of intervention in relation to any kind of risk. You see, it kind of looks like a bullseye diagram with the smaller rings in the middle being incident response and risk intervention, and then prevention and social development flanking that. And as larger rings, the goal is really to look at having the bulk of investments be further out away from incident response. So wanting to intervene, whether through social development strategies that looks at cross-sector work on complex social issues like poverty, or whether it's prevention, looking at proactively identifying the risks and implementing policies or programs to target people who are more at risk. Those are the kinds of interventions that we really want to focus on as we move through this work. And strategically, that's important because the interventions that are done upstream in those social development and prevention realms, number one, they have much greater and more lasting impact for individuals and communities, and they also have a greater return on investment. So not to say that risk intervention, like the situation table for acute response or incident response, whether it's EMS or police services, won't be needed. But the goal is to really focus on what can we do more upstream in order to keep people from ending in a situation that's either very risky for them or has created a situation where they're left as victims or in contact with the law. So our advisory committee for the work, again, as I said, we are the largest. We do have the greatest number of municipalities that we're aware of participating in one regional plan. So we have both counties, Bruce and Gray, and 16 of the 17 lower-tier municipalities are participating in one joint plan by legal agreement, which is just outstanding. And what this does is it allows us to bring all of our other community partners to the table to collaborate when so many of those services cross boundaries between municipalities. So we do have two First Nation partners at the table. We have all eight police services and 14 police service boards represented. We have services from Children and Youth and Youth Justice. We have all three school boards and Georgian College at the table. And then we have a variety of organizations from community, social health, and mental health services. And because we know that there's already good work happening in the community, we also invited the co-chairs or coordinators for community and community committees and collaboratives that already exist. We invited them to our advisory committee table as well because the goal here is really to leverage the work that's happening and help coordinate it in a way that makes sense for our communities. So the creation of our Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan required under the legislation that we engage in community consultation. It certainly didn't end up looking the way we had hoped. We were planning to do a community engagement survey and then engage in municipal community sessions where we were face-to-face with residents, talking about the results of the survey and diving more deeply into that. But of course, COVID-19 did impact all of our engagement that we've been able to do as organizations and collaboratives. But we were really proud. We launched the survey on our website on February 1st and we closed the survey on March 22nd, just a week later after the COVID-19 pandemic restrictions really started to take effect. And we had almost 2,000 residents participate in that survey consultation from across Bruce and Gray. And to give you some context, Halton Region, which is three and a half times our population, they took part in this planning process a few years ago as a pilot project, a pilot community. And they had just over 500 people participate in their first round of consultation. So we actually had three and a half times the participation that they did, which again shows the engagement of our residents across Bruce and Gray. Two other things to highlight for you is we do have an epidemiologist supporting our work. So she supported both the evaluation of our survey and also the current work that we're doing related to evaluating our local data. And I'll speak more about that in a few minutes with regards to our indicator report. We also wanted to highlight that we've remained very connected to a few different groups throughout this work. One of them is the Canadian Municipal Network on Crime Prevention, who are leading this work really collaboratively across Canada. Halton Region, of course, was very instrumental in assisting lots of communities across Ontario get started with this work. And we also participate in the Ontario Municipal Social Services Association Working Group of coordinators for this safety and wellbeing planning. So I am very well-connected with the coordinators from our border communities and border counties where planning is also taking place because we want to ensure that our border communities are supported as we move to action. So this is the timeline for the safety and wellbeing planning process. As I said, we kicked off last fall in September. And after 14 months, here we are with plan adoption by municipalities, focusing on sustainability planning for the coming year and working on our indicator report. And just to highlight, we did take a brief break at the end of March and into April with when the pandemic really first kicked in. And the organizations in our area were most impacted, supporting the communities and residents. But then we decided, since we had had such great initial engagement and had gained such momentum, that we really wanted to continue with the planning process. So although the Ministry of the Solicitor General has postponed the actual date by which all municipalities must have a plan posted, it was originally January 1st of 2021. That date has been yet to be determined. We decided to move forward with the planning because we really felt that we had great engagement and great movement so far. This is the model for the planning process. It just gives you a kind of a graphic image and some details around the different participants in the work and the different phases in the work that we've engaged in so far. And what I really want to highlight for you is that as we finished Phase One of planning, which is really this plan coming to fruition, we're moving into creating those action tables or identifying those action tables for our priority areas of risk. These will be the subject matter experts that we know are in the community. We have many of them at our advisory committee table. And we'll be working with them to create or implement those really detailed action plans under this plan. And of course, we'll then be looking at outcome evaluation and impacts as well. So the priorities for action that came through very clearly from both our survey, our resident engagement survey, and through the local data, we wanted to highlight some key areas of concern that we'll be looking at as we move forward with action planning. So priority risk area one for addiction and substance use. Some key concerns include the fact that regular heavy drinking remains a known issue in our community with self-reported use in Bruce and Gray continuing to track higher than Ontario. This is not new. This is historical, but we continue to be higher than the rest of Ontario. We also see that emergency department visits, the tracking there shows that over half are linked to alcohol. And there's been a two and a half to three times increase for opioid-related visits. We also know that school student alcohol and cannabis use is increasing. And while we have trends on the alcohol use, we are currently working in the region on trends related to cannabis because of that legalization of cannabis in October 2018. So we're just building new information there. Another key piece of information we know, though, is that addiction and substance use is the cause of increasing hospitalization and death in the region. For priority risk area two, this is mental health. No surprise to many people who live and work in the area. We know that self-rated mental health indicators show approximately 20% of our residents are experiencing a lot of stress and 15% of them report seeking help for mental health issues. We know that for grade seven to 12 students, more than 30% of them report experiencing moderate to severe psychological distress. And a third of those want to talk to someone about their mental health but don't know where to turn. We know that both EMS and police services in the region have also seen increases in calls related to mental health concerns and that 211 calls for mental health issues have also increased. And self-harm emergency department visit rates have tripled among young females locally. And although that's comparable to the province, what isn't comparable is that Bruce and Gray males aged 25 to 44 years of age continue to have higher hospitalizations and death by suicide in our region compared to the rest of Ontario. When we look at priority risk area three, crime prevention, we were able to gather a significant amount of information from all four of our OPP detachments and our four local police services. And we're working through that regional data, that more local data with each of those groups in order to kind of generalize those statistics as we look at planning across the region. But what we do know is that criminal court cases show trends are increasing over time for most offenses. So there was a 17% to 27% increase for most offenses between 2017 and 2019. And we also found that although assault injuries are comparable to Ontario rates, Bruce and Gray has a higher rate of emergency department visits due to assaults. And so that's certainly something that we want to dive in in more detail. Priority risk area four, identified as housing and homelessness. And what we see here is that compared to Ontario and the rest of Canada, our region has more owned dwellings and far fewer rental dwellings, with some areas having more subsidized housing than comparators. So Owen Sound, Meaford, King Carden, and Southgate have higher subsidized housing. We also know that over 15% of our homeowners and almost 50% of our renters in Bruce and Gray spend more than 30% of their monthly income on shelter costs. And that's the accepted cutoff for affordable housing, 30% of your monthly income. And this is a situation that leaves many people, especially those in the lower-income brackets, only one to two paychecks away from homelessness in our region. We also know that average housing prices are increasing but are lower than Ontario and that there's very low rental vacancy rates in our region. Again, similar to Ontario, but the situation this leaves is that there's very little housing stock available if someone either needs to sell their home and move into a rental property or if they're in a rental property that's either unsafe or not adequate for their needs. There's nowhere else to go in the region. We also know that seasonal housing numbers are high in North Bruce Peninsula, Town of the Blue Mountains in South Bruce Peninsula, which again impacts the availability of permanent housing. And we know that housing waitlists are increasing as are calls to 211 for housing issues. Priority risk area five, poverty and income. We see in our region that median household incomes are lower than Ontario and they're the lowest in Owen Sound, Hanover, and South Bruce Peninsula. And we also know that it's still approximately 20% of the children in our region live in poverty. This is highest in Huron-Kinloss at 30%, followed by Chatsworth, Owen Sound, Southgate, and Aaron Eldersley, which are all around 25 to 28%. Correlated to this, of course, is that trends from various organizations show the increasing need for support such as Ontario Works, ODSP, the United Way Backpack Program, and Utility Assistance. And we've seen an increase in the 211 calls related to food, meals, and utilities as well. In addition to that population that says that they're not able to, or sorry, that they're spending more than 30% of their income on housing, we also know that 5% of residents in the past year had not paid their rent or mortgage on time. 18% report not paying other bills on time, and 9% ate less because they did not have enough money to buy food. So that's a lot. It's a lot of systemic, big, wicked problems. And the reason why we put five in the plan is because we know those, we originally talked about putting three regional areas of concern in the plan. But poverty and income and housing and homelessness are so intrinsically tied with the first three categories of addiction and substance use, mental health and crime prevention, that we really felt we couldn't leave them out. And we know that work being done in any one of those categories positively impacts the others. So when we look at how we're going to take action on these wicked problems, we certainly want to focus on our local solutions and collective impact. And this is part of the reason why our advisory committee is so large and diverse because we want to ensure that collective planning is occurring across sectors and between those collaborative committees as we move forward. We want to implement actions that are systems-based, are upstream, and are tied to project outcomes that we can evaluate as we move forward. So again, we want to leverage the good work that's already happening in Gray-Bruce by enhancing that collaboration and coordination between those various organizations, committees, and initiatives. When we look at facilitating outcome evaluation, this involves the indicator report that I spoke about briefly earlier. So we're currently creating this report and it hasn't been done for a number of years in Gray-Bruce. We are actually collating and collecting local data from across agencies and various sources in the community, different pieces of research that's been done in order to create a foundation for evaluation. So under each of the 10 priority categories of risk for our community safety and wellbeing work, and we've included five in this plan, we will actually have baseline data, snapshot in time of data and indicators, things that if we decide to take action on, we will know what the baseline was when we started this planning process. And the goal would be to update this as regularly as resources allow in order to facilitate that outcome evaluation. And we really want it to be seen as a resource for the advisory table, advisory committee, those action tables, and the organizations who are participating in this work. So from a sustainability perspective, as we move into 2021, of course, local municipalities and counties are all planning their budgets. And the goal is to actually create a 2021 budget for implementation of this plan, this moving to action. In the same way, we created the shared funding model for Phase One of this project over the last 14 months. So the goal is to have a pool of funding that would be leveraged to continue to resource the work of the coordinator in order to move this plan to action. We know by pooling resources, there will be a reduction in the duplication of work and it will reduce the overall implementation costs for those individual local municipalities, allowing for a streamlined approach that also supports the work of the organizations who, where in many cases, they are actually serving all of Bruce and Gray. So next steps for our work. So of course, I said, we're out presenting to county councils for endorsement and municipal councils for approval. Once the plan is approved, it will go up on our website. Our website is also getting a refresh right now. And that indicator report, when it's complete, will also be posted as well for sharing and local use. We'll get that budget confirmed and ensure that the work of the coordinator continues to drive forward into action, which is where we'll then be looking to identify or create those action tables. Generally one for each of those priority areas of risk to really support that in-depth review of local data by the subject matter experts. And then look at further community engagement by those action tables to support the development of those action plans. That will also include another round. The goal is to administer our community engagement survey again in 2021 and to look at ways to support municipalities to engage the communities around this work. Finally, we know that there will be regulations under the legislation regarding monitoring, evaluation, and revision of the plan, and we're awaiting those. But at a bare minimum for us, it will include annual progress reports to our advisory committee, councils, and the ministry as we move forward. So thank you for your time. That's a lot in a nutshell, but happy to take any questions at this time as well.
Thank you, Sarah. Does Barb have any comments?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I very much appreciate the opportunity to present with Sarah this evening. We have been working for 14 months, as she mentioned on this, and we are very proud of the work that's gone into it. It is not a completed document. It's a starting point for us. We know that there's a lot of work to be done. Implementation is going to take a lot of effort. But we have, we've got momentum and we've got organizations on board, 72. That is unheard of. Unwieldy? Not really, though, because everybody's using the same frame of reference and the same scope that we are looking at our communities and saying, we can do better. Can't do it alone. We have to do it together. And we have some great supports provincially and we have some good folks that have gone ahead of us. So we're borrowing things that are working well and we're really digging deep to make this work. So looking forward to where we take this work.
Thank you, Barb. Sarah, Barb, thanks very much for a great presentation. Before I go to council for questions, I would like to ask my fellow police service board members, do they have any questions?
Can you hear me, Dwight? It's Peter.
Yes, I can, Peter.
Yeah, I just had a question for the planning committee. Since they're, they're obviously going to be coming to the six or 14 different municipalities and the two First Nations to present budgets. It says their outline is to implement and monitor and revise the plan annually and review it with the partners, of course, the council. And I just wondered, and they're also going to review it with the ministry. Is the ministry, are they going to be part of the budget in this or not? Or is it just going to be the locally funded with the Bruce and Gray counties? I'm just curious.
Barb, shall I let you speak to that?
Sure, I can take that. So that's a really good question, Peter. We believe that there should be funding from a provincial level. It is Ministry of Solicitor General-driven and mandated for municipalities to have a plan in place. The date was extended. The original date was for December 31st. It had been extended due to COVID. So we kept moving forward. We are really going to meet our deadline. If not, it'll just be maybe one or two weeks into the new year. But we have not put ourselves on pause, simply because we all believe in the activity that needs to happen. What we started out with was an overall lens to wellbeing. Once we started rolling up our sleeves and digging in, we realized that this was a multi-level approach that needs to happen. We have to engage with each other first. We have to figure out who each other are. And then we have to bring onboard and build the infrastructure so that as we move ahead and we decide who will be doing what. Sarah mentioned lots of good work already being done. So some of the work for the housing and homelessness piece will go to housing and homelessness tables that are already existing. Some of the work on poverty will go to the Poverty Task Force. The municipalities will have their own initiatives that we'll be working closely with as well. So that is part of the implementation. It's a five-year plan. We have, we're not looking to solve all of this in the coming year. I wish we could. If we could snap our fingers, we would. But it's going to take some collaboration and some work to go forward. The great news is that we're getting good traction because we are that big collaborative that Sarah spoke to. We're really proud of the fact that we're making it work as two counties. That's what the province wants us to do, is work together. And they really are looking for us to come up with a Made in Gray and Bruce solution. And that's what this is. So that being said, we're going to advocate for funds going forward. For the 2021 budget, we're using the same funding formula that we used in 2020. So out of the Gray County reserves will come our contribution for the municipalities in Gray. So it's not going to come out of your lower-tier budgets at this time for the coming year.
Thank you, Barb. Peter, did that get your question answered?
Yes, that's good, Dwight. Thank you.
Gary Hat, are you on the line and do you have any questions?
Yeah, do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, just wondering, the county is paying for this right now. How much is the budget for this year going to be for each county's?
Want me to take that one, Sarah? Sure. So we mirrored the budget that we went into 2020 with. And so it is a $55,000 commitment from Gray County and $50,000 commitment from Bruce County for a total of 105.
Okay, second question. You're going to have to hire a coordinator for this. When does that happen? And will that come out of your police budgets or who's picking up the tab?
Yeah, thank you for that question. The coordinator that's currently working with us, which is Sarah, her contract has been extended to March 31st. As the working group, the steering committee working group, will be collaborating early into the new year for that plan. You've hit the nail on the head. Without a driver behind this, this just becomes another plan that sits on a shelf and none of us want to see that. Nor can we do it. The province is going to require us to report back on the work that we've done. And as I mentioned, the momentum that we've built is helping us to look at sustainability as a key factor for us. Some of us are going to retire in the future, hopefully. And so that needs to have some legs of its own so that it continues. And I think the municipalities themselves, you guys are going to want to know, how are we going to keep this moving forward? How is this going to stay a focused approach even without the leadership that's currently here? So it does need to have someone driving it and that would be the resource, which would be funded out of the contributions from Bruce and Gray. So it will not be back on your police budgets.
Thank you very much.
Gary, any other questions?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter and Gary. Now I'm going to open for it to council. Does any council have any questions? Madam Clerk, I see no questions. Do you?
No, I don't see any questions over fellow council members. And just so all of council is aware, I have prepared a report, resolution, and bylaw for consideration at the December 16th council meeting. It is a requirement of the Police Services Act that each respective council adopts the plan by resolution. So we will be doing that next week.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Deputy Mayor Carleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank Barb and Sarah for all the work they've done on this because when I first heard about each municipality needing to have this, I had visions of every one of us going out, each and every individual going. And this way it just works so much better to have it all as one full unit. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And Sarah and Barb, great presentation. Thank you very much for all your efforts today. I see no other questions. We will thank you for your presentation tonight and move forward for our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye now.
So moving on our agenda, we're down to delegations, which we have none. So moving on our agenda, we're down to our correspondence. Our first correspondence is from Judy Ixson, Charlotte Lake Boat, petition. Madam Inter C E O, you want to speak to us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually just wanted to let you know that our facilities coordinator, Zach Carson, is on the line. And he has a bit more history on this. If council has any questions about what took place or even Zach, if you just wanted to speak to this petition for a second and explain the township's involvement in this process, please.
You can go ahead, Zach.
Yes. So as some of you may know from reading this or have been in the area, the area that is sort of popular as the launching area at Shallow Lake down at the Township's lower field, sort of where the trail intersects Shallow Lake. The boat launch, the boat access has been blocked to motorize vehicles in this area. There was a meeting several weeks Um, there was a meeting several weeks ago out there. We were out there with the Conservation Authority as well as, um, the, uh, Sidney Sportsman Club, and, uh, they, they were describing some ongoing problems with motorized vehicles accessing the lake. Obviously, when the lake levels are as they are this year, um, the motorized vehicles aren't getting in there and, and mudding and, and tearing it up. That being said, uh, there is still the concerns of the motorized vehicles accessing there in the future if the water recedes or when the water recedes. So, um, some, some, uh, strategies, I guess, were, were sort of thrown about to, uh, help in their, uh, plan to prevent this access. Uh, there were some trees taken down, um, and left, uh, just, they were just felled and, and left to help, uh, block the area. Um, I believe these were ash trees that had planned to be cut down anyways, uh, most likely believed to already be infected with the Emerald Ash Bore, um, as well as some rocks removed around, uh, and then a lot of additional signage, uh, some additional signage was put up, um, by the conservation, or sorry, by the sportsman club, uh, just describing the permitted use of the area. Uh, people can still access it. Uh, you're still allowed to fish. You're still allowed to canoe. Uh, they just didn't want the motorized vehicles accessing it anymore. So, um, in terms of the township's involvement, obviously, uh, we don't control the lake. Um, we don't own the lake. Um, there's more Conservation Authority involvement there as, uh, they border the actual road allowance and lower field parking lot, and then beyond there is the Sidney Sportsman Foundation. Um, so I can, I can answer any questions, but that's, that's basically the history of what's sort of happened there over the last, uh, couple of weeks or months.
Thank you, Zach. I'm just wanting, since Savo Conservation have such a tremendous, uh, uh, input in this particular area, I wonder would it be good if we were to ask them to come and present to council to what their, uh, thoughts are on the whole situation? Madam CEO?
If, if that's the direction of council, we can definitely make those arrangements if council wishes. Um, I did see Councilor Coburn's hand up.
Go ahead, Councilor Coburn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Zach, I was just curious, I'm sorry if I missed it, but who, who was it that was putting the barricades up, um, blocking access to the lake previously and then more recently? Who, who is it that felled the trees and blocked the access in that manner? Was that us or was that Conservation Authority?
There was the Conservation Authority that, that dropped the trees. The trees are on their property. Um, there was minimal, um, obstruction, uh, there before. Uh, there, there is sort of a, well, there is a boat launching area in there, um, but there, um, really isn't any gates or fences that was, that were stopping people from, from accessing it. Uh, there was some rocks and such in place, but not spaced, um, close enough to prevent that activity from happening. So, um, when we met with them there several weeks ago, uh, they were just asking if, uh, you know, as, as the township's, um, trail as well as the road and parking area there do border on the property, if we can move some of our, our barriers around just to help them in, in blocking this access. It's, uh, it was, um, sort of a request of theirs to restrict, uh, unpermitted activity in there. And, I mean, from, from the, what the township had to do, it was, it was very minimal. I think we moved one or two rocks around just to block some areas that, uh, we had, we had some, some rocks sitting around there that, uh, that we could move about, but, um, yeah, it was the Conservation Authority property that the trees were actually, uh, felled on.
Okay, thanks for that information. Given the number of people that have signed this petition, Mr. Mayor, I think it would be, um, prudent for us to follow through a little bit more as was suggested, um, in meeting with the, the Conservation Authority and see if a, a more amicable solution can be found.
I agree, Councilor Coburn. That's why I was suggesting that we invite Savo Conservation representatives to come, present to council, um, the whole area and what's our plans and so on and so forth. Just we have a better handle on what's going on. I'm not trying to take any way news that, but it's just, it'd be nice to think that they did come and explain to us what's going on, what's our future and so on and so forth. And I did see we had 148 different, uh, responses to that survey, which was quite amazing, and there seemed to be a very consistent theme going through it. And it'd be just nice to have Savo Conservation come before council and have a conversation. Does council have any other questions?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilor Barfett.
Okay, just correct me if I'm wrong here, Zach. Everybody keeps rever, referring to the Conservation Authority. Let's be very clear, it's my understanding that the lake is owned by the Sidney Ham Conservation Authority, not the Gray Savo Conservation Authority. So it, it comes under the Sidney Sportsman. That's right. They are a very responsible conservation group. Personally, I don't think we should be involved in this at all. Um, it's their property. I can agree with them, you know, if the trees had the ash bore or if they were dying, you know, they're trying to keep people off the lake with motorized vehicles. They're a private property owner. I don't, I'm very uncomfortable interfering in this. And the people that signed the petition probably already know that that property is owned by the Sidney Sportsman Conservation. So I don't think we, you know, you know, we can acknowledge the letter, but I don't think it's council's role to tell private property owners how to preserve the natural beauty of their property.
Thank you, Councilor Barfett. Madam Kirk, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that the township and Gray Savo were simply CC'd on this, uh, petition. The original petition in its entirety was forwarded to the Sidney Sportsman's Association.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilor Barfett.
Yeah, I noticed that we're only CC'd on it, and, and that's nice, they let us know, but I think it's very wrong for the municipality to get involved in this.
Okay, your comments are well loaded. Does council have any other questions on, uh, this piece of correspondence? So, uh, is, what is council's request? We're just going to tip? Carol, have you got another question? Councilor Barfett? You're good, Carol?
Yeah, you know, it, we have to acknowledge it, but I think those people that signed the petition have to realize that it's not council's mandate, mandate to be telling private property owners about their own property. Sidney Sportsman Group are a very, very conscientious group. They're doing what they think is best, and I agree with them. Stay out of it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Madam CEO?
Um, I do have a suggestion. So maybe instead of directing staff to reach out to Gray Savo, you direct staff to reach out to the Sidney Sportsman Club. And the purpose of that could be just to provide, um, you know, council and the township information on their ownership of the property, what the uses are for it, because it did used to be a public access, um, and they may be able to provide us more information about, you know, the purposes that they have for that property. And that could be helpful to communicate to these ratepayers instead of, you know, um, instead of trying to get boat, boat access, um, we can help, uh, Sidney Sportsman Club to communicate to the ratepayers that they own this and the purpose of what they've done and the purpose of their group.
That's a great suggestion, Madam CEO. Uh, and I think it would be valuable information under this format to have it sent to council so it would go out to everywhere.
Yes, so I can reach out to Sidney Sportsman Club and, uh, determine, you know, what they're comfortable with doing and what kind of information they'd be able to provide. And we can, we can treat it as more as a communication and information session to both council and to our residents.
Okay, is council okay with that? I've seen heads nodding yes, okay. Thank you. Madam CEO, if you do that. Uh, moving on, uh, with our agenda then, we're down to our next correspondent, Mike Levert, Copa, has sent a request for relief. And, uh, Madam, if you thought here? No. Um, and I guess it's for information, Madam Kirk. Uh, CEO, go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. So, in one of our, um, agreements with a tenant at the airport, um, basically with the restaurant, they have, um, priority food service, um, with the airport property. So our agreement with, um, I'm looking at Deputy Mayor Carlton, she's more familiar with that.
I think in the last agreement that Copa signed with the township, there is no, yeah, they have no access on that.
Thank you for the clarification. So basically, our restaurant, um, tenant has the right for food services at the airport, but Copa is looking for, is for council to waive, um, or provide relief for that clause. Um, I would remind council that you do have an agreement with the tenant that says that she does get first priority for food service.
I agree with that, that's going to be on the comments, that we cannot waive that request for contact with the restaurant owner. And the other, uh, thing I might add is that, uh, I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable for council to give a blanket, uh, relief on all events. I think they should apply to council in writing relief for each one in a timely manner before it happens, so that council can make decisions each time whether or not we're going to relieve the, the fees for, uh, what's the proper word, Madam Kirk, uh, looking for?
The special events.
The special events, yeah. In other words, to waive those fees on the special events, we should, they should do it every time and submit a, uh, a, a letter to the township asking for that request. Madam CEO?
Um, I would like to comment that I'm currently working on renegotiating that lease with the restaurant owner. Um, so through those negotiations, council could make changes to that clause, but in the meantime, we are operating under the terms and conditions of the existing lease.
And we as a council, and no one knows how Copa's going to interfere going on in 2021, so, uh, I, I'd feel more comfortable if council agrees that we'd ask the, send them back a request or reply and see that we want them to apply for each one of the events as it comes up. And then the council will make that decision at that time to waive those fees. I'm not saying they won't do it, I'm just saying it would be more appropriate if it goes down that way. Does council agree with that statement or not? I see heads nodding yes, so, Madam CEO, I guess I can turn it over to you as a clerk.
Uh, yes, the clerk will respond, um, with your direction and provide them guidance on how to proceed.
But you're just trying to take some of the work away from the clerk. Okay, we've got more correspondence, but we will have our dinner. We're down to the staff reports. Our first recommendation is that staff are hereby directed to present a bylaw to adopt the Recreation and Trails Master Plan on December 16th, 2020. Someone to move to put it on the floor, please. Moved by Councilor Barfett, seconded by Councilor Coburn. Uh, it's on the floor for discussion. Um, does any staff member want to speak to this or, uh, just open for it for questions? So you know, volunteer, Zach? Go ahead, Zach.
Yep, um, if, if you want to just open for questions, um, basically, uh, there's a bit of a refresher here, as this sort of hasn't been on the floor for quite some time now, as we've been, um, proceeding with some of the, uh, direction we received from council when we, uh, had the Recreation Trails Master Plan draft up in front of council several months ago now, I think back in July. So, um, since then, we've, uh, passed the, uh, new, uh, ATV bylaw, um, as well as we've reached out to, um, some of the, uh, stakeholders that, uh, council was concerned with us reaching out for. So, uh, Niagara River Government, uh, Commission was reached, we reached out to them as well as the, uh, Gray Savo Conservation Authority. Um, some minor updates, um, I, I must say, there's, there's nothing too significant, some clarification of some information, um, you'll see the mapping, there was a note added to it, just to confirm that some of the proposed trail routes weren't set in stone by any means, they're just there for illustrative purposes, uh, just so you can show how, um, some of the suggestions to, um, basically, uh, connect some of the urban areas with the, with the trails, but by no means, um, are there plans to intersect any protected areas or environmentally sensitive areas. It's just, uh, a means of showing that, uh, there is a route there that would be worthwhile for connecting. Um, and then, as I mentioned, the, uh, ATV bylaw was passed that addressed some of the concerns with, uh, motorized access, um, in some, uh, areas that are covered by the Niagara River Government Plan. So, um, of course, open for, uh, any questions or comments.
Thanks, Zach. Just so council, I'm pretty sure they're aware of, this is a living document. If we do pass a bylaw, we make changes to it anytime we see fit. So, just so we're aware of that. Uh, and, uh, looks like the clerk will be bringing back a bylaw on our next meeting. Madam, uh, for go to Carol, Madam Kirk?
Um, not really any comments, but yes, I will bring back a bylaw on December 16th, should council, um, adopt the resolution as presented this evening. Um, if we decide we need to have more conversations, then of course, we can, uh, proceed in that way.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Barfett, I see your hand up. Carol, you're muted.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Zach. When we had, uh, some of the public meetings, it was very, uh, clear that a lot of the people who were there would like to, to see the draft document before we pass it. So, are they aware that it's online? Like, did we send stuff out to people? Um, we made that commitment that we would, and, um, I would certainly like their opinion on it as well. I have another question. We talked about, um, the Ball Diamond at Clavering. We're still going to leave a Ball Diamond there, I hope, because that land was given to the township, and I'm wondering if there was something there that there would always be a Ball Diamond. I know it has to be used for recreational purposes, but hopefully we leave the Ball Diamond there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Barfett. Uh, Councilor Thompson, I see your hand. We have?
Uh, I, I was, but I, I think, I was just going to support Carol's comment, so I think, uh, there is language that that field has to remain. I think it's, I think the wording is an athletic field, I think is, is how that, how that's worded, but there is specific wording that it can't be, um, changed in a material way.
Thank you. Madam Kirk, I was looking at you on the spot, can I ask how this document was presented to the public? I believe I don't remember, so on and so forth?
Uh, yes, absolutely. So, and Zach, jump in here at any point if I miss anything. Um, as we all are aware, this has been ongoing for a while now. I believe it commenced in 2019, at which point we held multiple public meetings, all of which were open to the public to facilitate their feedback. We have had, um, the planning consultants present at council a couple of times this year as well, all of which have led to the creation of this final document. As the mayor has outlined, this is simply a plan to help guide us through the next few years of planning our recreational, um, facilities and trail uses. As the mayor has also commented, this is a living document, one of which that can be updated as we see fit. Um, yeah, so lots of opportunities given to the public, and we can continue the public feedback process as we move through the next few years as well. I think as Georgian Bless changes, so will the plan, and at which point we can welcome public feedback as well.
Thank you. Councilor Coburn, or go ahead. Sorry.
That's what I was going to tell you, that Councilor Coburn has her hand raised.
For some reason, after tonight, I can see their hands very plain. Councilor Coburn, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so I did have, um, one comment and then a couple of questions regarding the map, if I may, Zach. Um, I noted under guiding philosophies and principles, um, what jumped out at me is a, sort of a lack of referencing environmental stewardship. So I think for me, that was a piece that was, um, was missing and is an important piece, um, in terms of a guiding philosophy, and we've seen that over the last several months in regards to the issues we've had with motorized vehicles in, um, protected land. So that was, that was one piece for me that I think is, um, missing. In terms of the map that's on page 40, um, I'm confused about this map still. It's, it talks about existing and proposed public trails, and yet- It's, it talks about existing and proposed public trails, and yet, there's nothing that indicates Coles Trail, the Campbell Mountain Trail, or the Rock Cut Trail unless I'm just not seeing it. So those, those are missing, and maybe there's a reason why they're not there. That's one, one comment, one question that I have. And you did speak, Zach, to the, the proposed trails, which are the red dotted lines. Though the, the ones that concern me are the ones that are in those Niagara Skartman Protected Areas at the very north part, just this side of Big Bay, and also the proposed trail that goes through the Campbell Mountain Management Area. And I know they're proposed, but the reality is when people look at maps like this, they don't often look at the legend. They see those, they see that it's called existing and proposed trails, and all of a sudden, those become trails. So I do have concerns with those ones because they're in such close proximity to those Niagara Skartman Protected Areas where we have already seen some concerns. So I wonder if you could, that's a lot, Zach, I'm sorry, but I wonder if you could just respond to those comments.
Zach, I'll turn it over to you to do the best you can.
Yep, okay. I will try to touch on all of those things. Let me know if I've missed something. I think I'll start with some of those trails, I guess, that were brought up in council last week, specifically the Coles Road Trails. Those are not, I guess the best way I can say this, those aren't necessarily like township trail routes. They're, they're road allowances, and we've never, as a township, developed trails or promoted trails on there, just as we haven't on any other road allowance. The only time those come up, I think, as trails is, as was brought up last week at council, was on the South Bruce Peninsula ATV Club's website. So we don't, we don't maintain those as trails. We don't advertise them as a township as trails. And to my knowledge, we, we never have as a township. That's probably why they don't show up on this map. That's why this map is only showing basically the rail trail as well. It has some Bruce Trail loops and some, some more notable public trails that are, that are managed by, by, you know, like a larger provincial organization or body. Sorry, I'm sort of forgetting some of the things that, that you brought up there. Again, the proposed routes, I, I really don't see this map getting more attention than, than what it's getting in the plan here. This wouldn't be something I don't think that, that would be a widespread map that we would be promoting. It's, it's merely here as, as, as a, as a guide to what the township could do in the future. I honestly don't know, I, I know the intention was to show that there's potential for, for some trail routes to connect. I know it touches in the plan about connecting other trails, connecting urban areas, connecting points of interest. And I, I think that's what the consultants were going for here was, I need to move more or my sensors turn off in here. I, I think that's what the consultants were trying to do was, was touch on that there is, there is some potential for connecting some prominent areas. And they didn't want to give off the idea that these were going to be motorized accesses. They were going to be a trail of some kind, but, but not necessarily like a, a primary trail. Sorry, the terminology is slipping me right now where motorized access would be allowed. It, it is merely just a proposed route to connect important features in the township. Sorry, I'm, I'm not sure of a few of the other things I asked. I know there's some more there.
I, I know, and you did great. You covered almost all of it except for the guiding principle that leaves out any remarks or commitment to being proper stewards, stewards of environmentally sensitive areas.
Right. Sorry, I'm just sort of bringing up some things in the plan as I go along here. And you're specifically referencing figure two there, the goal statement and guiding principles for trails, or, okay. Yeah, may, maybe it might not necessarily bring it out enough in this diagram. I think it does touch on, you know, some, some environmental benefits in the discussion of trails. And of course, as we've seen over these last several weeks, it, it is, it is an ongoing issue, and it's, it's definitely something that's coming up a lot in the township. So I mean, I, I think, I think we need to maybe continue stressing about how, how this is a living document, and as, as trends and, you know, important, important things come up in the township that stakeholders and ratepayers want to bring forward, there, there are definitely things that can be added in this, and, and maybe that's something that could have, could have come forward a little bit more in it. It's, it's obviously something that is, is very pertinent today as we've seen over the last several council meetings that there, there is a voice for, for the continued growth of trails for, for different stakeholders. Not necessarily just motorized access in the area, but for, for people who are looking for a more natural or environmental goal in their, in the recreational pursuit.
Yeah, I agree. So yeah, the, the page I'm talking about isn't numbered, but it would be, it would follow page 32. So it's page 33, Goal Statement and Guiding Principles. How much trouble would it be to add that as a guiding principle at this stage of the game?
I, I'm, I don't think it would be too much of a problem to, to add, to add something there.
Zach, I'm going to turn it forward to the clerk to let her make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a couple of comments on top of, sorry, what Zach has already said. As for our new ATV bylaw in regards to your proposed trailway systems, question, Councilor Coburn. Our new ATV bylaw does say that any trail that will be open to any type of off-road vehicle does have to be pre-approved by council. So I am hopeful that that would help ease your mind a little bit in regards to the proposed trailway system. I also think that as part of community outreach, following adoption of this plan and as we move it through the next few years, we would remove the proposed trailway systems and further identify and highlight which trailways currently exist and what their uses are. And we could share that on social media as well as the township website and really make that information available for people.
Thank you, Madam Kirk. Councilor Coburn, have you got all your questions answered as best you can? I can't see any other questions. Oh, Deputy Mayor Carlton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one question. As we bring the bylaw forward and this plan is implemented, staff are going to look after implementing, and we're saying it's a living document. What's going to trigger changes to the document? Where will that come from? Will that be staff reports coming back, or how will that occur?
Madam CEO.
Thank you. There's a lot of different avenues to trigger changes. So yes, staff reports is one option, or what we've seen occurring the last month. You know, if ratepayers make a delegation to council and council gives the direction for staff to research other options, then that's another avenue as well. You know, the public is always able to attend our meetings and provide their comments, and then council can determine if that's something they want staff to pursue or not. So I really think, you know, those changes can be implemented from all kinds of different levels.
Good. Thank you, Madam CEO. Seeing whether hands up or no other discussion on the motion, so I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of the motion before us. It is carried. Moving on for agenda, we're down to our next recommendation. The staff are hereby directed to present a bylaw to adopt the 2021 fees and charges by law at the December 16th, 2020 council meeting. Someone to move to put it on the floor, please. Moved by Councilor Thompson, second by Councilor Pringle. Madam CEO, you want to speak to this? Madam Treasurer, I should say.
Yes, right now I'm treasurer. So, thank you. Every year, we take a look at our fees and charges by law and make sure that we have the appropriate fees in place to cover, you know, the services that we do. So the purpose of fees and charges is to make sure that the tax base is not covering things that, you know, are more of a user charge. So specific to a person, specific to a property, those types of things. So each manager was responsible for going through their schedule and determining if changes need to be made from year to year. So what they do is they look at, are the current fees covering the cost of providing that service? We also do a market check to look at what our neighbors are charging, because sometimes, yes, the fee isn't enough to cover that service, but we don't want to jack it up so much that it makes our township unappealing for things, whether it be no use of our arenas or building a house. So we try to keep in line with what other municipalities in the area are doing. And this report summarizes the changes being recommended. One comment I do have is Deputy Mayor Carlton reached out to me on Monday and wanted clarification on a point. Under Schedule B, my last comment, so after the table on page two of my report, it says additionally, a minimum of $75 is retained for any application that is withdrawn. This fee will increase to $150. An additional $125 is retained if a site visit was completed prior to the withdrawal of the application. This fee will increase to $100. That should say decrease. So what we're trying to do is because we increased the fee that we retain when an application is withdrawn, we're, we're decreasing the fee that we would retain if a site visit was done. That makes sense. I just used the wrong word.
You're for him.
I do make mistakes sometimes, yes.
Does council have any questions on this motion before us? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion before us. It is carried. Moving on for agenda, we're down to our next recommendation is that the cent-free workplace policy as dependent to this report is hereby approved and that the policy be included in existing HR policy manual. Someone to move to put it on the floor, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor Carlton, second by Councilor Thompson. And I see Crystal is here. Crystal, you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I can, I can answer any questions if anyone has any, but really, this is just another step in protecting the health and safety of our employees by having a cent-free workplace, mainly our administration building. This would apply to our employees, anyone and the outside, anyone coming in, including our office cleaners and the products that they would use, they would be aware of this policy. We just want to provide a workplace that doesn't give people headaches or make them nauseous from scents that people may use, i.e. lotions, cologne, perfume, things like that. We don't want that to inhibit the health of our employees. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Thanks, Crystal. Does council have any questions on this motion before? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion. It is carried. Okay, moving on for agenda, we're down to public question period. Madam Kirk, has there been anyone reply?
There is not.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we're down to, let's start on to the business. Madam Treasurer, I'm going to let you go first with your survey.
Thank you. So a couple of weeks ago, Councilor Barfett brought up that she loved the idea of having a public survey for 2021 budget input. So I have prepared that survey, and I just wanted to inform council and the public that is now live on our website. And we, that survey will be open for comments and for feedback until January 15th. At that time, I will compile the answers and report back to council on what we hear back.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. I guess if council has no questions, it's Treasurer on that. Carol, do I see your hand up? Councilor Barfett? You're muted, Carol. You're muted, Carol.
Thank you very much, Madam Treasurer. I haven't filled it out, but I think it's a good idea that we have more input in it. So thank you very much for doing that.
Okay. Seeing no other questions on that, then we'll move forward with our agenda to defer at December 2nd council meeting. And Madam Kirk, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for consideration this evening and as deferred at the December 2nd council meeting, we have appended bylaw 202134, being a bylaw to appoint council members to local boards and committees of the township. Also appended to the agenda is the report considered at the November 25th council meeting that describes all of the committees that require appointments and how appointments are made to each varying committee. So to better structure this discussion this evening, I thought we would go line by line through each committee that requires appointees and open discussion for each committee. Should we determine that there's multiple council members interested in one vacant position, I have come prepared, ready to pull names out of a hat. I have a Christmas bag, but out of a metaphorical hat, should we need to do so. So to begin, I'm going to follow the order of the motion that has been included in your agenda package. The Owen Sound and North Great Union Public Library Board, as we discussed last week, the Public Libraries Act does require that that appointment remain as appointed at the beginning of each council term for the duration of the entire four years. So as this bylaw reflects, Councilor Ryan Thompson will remain the appointee of the township on this committee. We also enacted by resolution at the November 25th meeting that all community appointees would remain as appointed throughout the remainder of the council term. So our community appointee will remain on this committee as well. Our next committee is the Gray Sobal Conservation Authority Board. Now, there was some discussion over what the Conservation Authorities Act permitted in regards to appointees. I have confirmed both with the legislation and with Gray Sobal Conservation Authority that at this time, they, they will entertain a turnover in appointees should council decide to do so. In 2018, council appointed Deputy Mayor Carlton and Mayor Burley to the committee. At this time, I would welcome a showing of interest in being appointed to this committee. Mayor Burley?
Yes.
Okay, so Mayor Burley has indicated his interest. Councilor Coburn has also indicated her interest. Do we have any other interested parties sitting on this committee? Councilor Coburn, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, no, sorry. I just wanted to also make the remark that they don't have to be council members appointed to, to the Gray Sobal Conservation Authority Board. We also have the right to appoint community members, and I know it's likely a little late for that this year, but maybe going forward, we, we might want to keep that in mind as I think we have lots of capable and interested community members who might, might want to step forward in the future into that particular appointment.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Coburn. Is there anyone else interested in sitting on this committee? Okay, so I don't see any. So the bylaw will be amended to reflect that Councilor Coburn and Mayor Burley will sit on the Gray Sobal Conservation Authority Board for the remainder of the council term. Okay. And moving on, our next committee, or board, I should say, is the Intertownship Fire Department Board of Management. Prior to opening it up for interested parties, I would like to comment that I did touch base with Councilor Sutherland this afternoon, noting that he was unable to attend. He did express his interest in sitting on this committee should there be no other interest.
Madam CEO.
Thank you. So just before you open up discussions about who's going to sit on the board, I did send out an email last week to council that the municipality of Meaford has decided to defer any decisions on dissolution of that board for a year. I was waiting for, they had advised me that they would provide a formal letter saying that, and it was my intention to put it on a council agenda meeting. I have not received that formal letter yet, but I felt I should provide this update in open session.
Thank you for that. Go ahead, Madam CEO. Go ahead, Madam CEO. Or, Madam Kirk.
Thank you. Councilor Colbert, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I have been on that board, and I just wanted to say that if I'm going to be on the Conservation Authority, I'd be happy to step aside on the Intertownship Fire Department to allow Councilor Sutherland to step up into that role.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Colbert. Prior to my appointing Councilor Sutherland in his absence, is there any other interested parties in sitting on this board? Deputy Mayor?
Just a question. This is one that the mayor and deputy mayor are automatically on, plus one counselor.
That is correct, yes. As per the existing agreement, the deputy mayor and the mayor are required to sit on this board. Okay, so the bylaw will be amended to reflect Councilor Sutherland sitting on this board rather than Councilor Colbert. Our next committee is the Physician Recruitment Committee. This bylaw currently reflects Councilor Thompson sitting on this board. Do I have any other interested parties? Slash, Councilor Thompson, would you like to comment?
No, thank you.
Councilor Thompson, are you still wanting to sit on the?
I'm, I'm happy to represent, I'm happy to continue to represent us on the board. I don't really have any comments.
Thank you.
Okay, so not seeing any interest other than Councilor Thompson, the bylaw will remain as it's currently written in that effect, that Councilor Thompson will serve as the appointee on the Physician Recruitment Committee. And lastly, we have our Gray County Farm Safety Association, which currently lists Councilor Sutherland as its appointee. Councilor Sutherland has indicated that he is happy to remain on this committee, should no other parties be interested. Is there anyone interested on sitting on this board or committee? Okay, I don't see any. So that brings us to the end of our list. So I would just like to go through that, so everyone is aware of what the bylaw will read next week. To the Owen Sound and North Gray Union Public Library Board, Councilor Ryan Thompson will remain as appointed. To the Gray Sawbowl Conservation Authority Board, Councilor Colbert and Mayor Dwight Burley will sit on the committee on behalf of the township. The Intertownship Fire Department Board of Management will be made up of Deputy Mayor Carlton, Mayor Burley, and Councilor Sutherland. To the Physician Recruitment Committee, we have Councilor Ryan Thompson. And to the Gray County Farm Safety Association, we have Councilor Paul Sutherland remaining in his current post. I would also like to comment that further to conversations at the November 25th and December 2nd meeting, we have reached out to the Shata Lake Village Improvement Board to facilitate further discussions regarding their plans for the future or interest in remaining on the committee and providing further information to council. So I do intend to report back to you in the new year regarding that board. And Councilor Barfitt, I do see that your hand is raised, should I make a comment?
Go ahead, Councilor Barfitt.
No, Mr. Mayor. And through you to Madam Clerk, and to you, Mr. Mayor. I feel much better now that it was discussed in the open, instead of having it sort of dropped on us that this is what you're going to do. I think you get better participation if people have a choice. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol. Madam CEO, you, I assume, Madam Clerk, that you should read the motion in its entirety and move on again?
No. So this, so this discussion was simply a deferral from the council meeting at December, on December 2nd, with the amendments we have discussed tonight, and will present the bylaw next week for final enactment. So that is the time at which you will pass this bylaw by motion.
Thank you. I just, I want you to read instead of me. Okay, thank you very much. So let's move on for agenda. We're down to new business. Do we have any new business here tonight? Seeing none? Do we have any notes of motions? Do we have any closed session here tonight? Seeing none? So we're down to, our next motion is for adjournment. And, I'll ask for a mover and a second. Moved by Councilor Pringle, second by Deputy Mayor Carlton. And I want to thank our new CEO for watching our meeting tonight, and thank you very much. You're welcome aboard. All in favor of the motion before us to adjourn? It's carried. We are now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.